Do you have three lodges that are sitting around? Each lodge has a tax.
Yeah.
Okay. I have an answer. Yes, exactly. So if, um, if you're interested, whatever, if I can get that information, we could have another project with that.
The only thing I can see is the cleaning out.
Just have it.
No, it would have to be hauled out. But if you were to get right down legal, the only thing they have to do is add a line or two and finish. Dump it on the ground, that's all they do anywhere else. Okay, well.
But that's not legal anymore.
But it is legal to have a home station.
No, I just thought we might be interested in that.
Call me at your order, please rise for a pledge and then invocation, we'll get started.
Fledge allegiance.
Fledge allegiance. The United States of America, hands of the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing as we do the invocation, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful weather that you're giving us, the rain is beautiful, and the drought is over in, in this area. And Heavenly Father, we thank you that we have, that we live into, in a country where we can meet like this, where we can openly say what's on our minds. And thank you so much, Heavenly Father, for this, this freedom, may we never, may we cherish it and always give you the glory for our meetings. May our attitudes be righteous, may, may you give us the wisdom we need for every single question, and may you give us an attitude of just getting aligned, just really liking each other. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for all you do, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Excuse me, stumble, open other meetings in reverse order, so I was in that mode, so. Roll call of members, please.
Moss.
Aye.
Yerkey.
Yes.
Mueller.
Here.
Jovic.
Here.
Getty.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Byalata.
Here.
Duralut.
Here.
Very well, proceed. Approval of agenda item four, the, uh, anybody have any input to the agenda that's in front of them?
Mr. Chair.
I have something.
Yes, Laura.
Whenever.
It's open.
There's, uh, I need to actually look at treasurer's report, and we'd like to have , uh, D Hydro Conference Budget for 2019 discussed. Then I had another one that, uh...
Will that fall under item six A?
Six, yeah.
Appropriately?
Six A, D.
Okay.
Let's see, the, uh... We'd like to have on budget number nine, proposal, proposed projects, just an update on the Canyon Lake, uh, dredge project. And I'd like to finish it off with possibly a, uh, on item E on twelve, standard project and numbering scheme that Dan and I have been talking about for all of our projects, trying to come up with a way to number each individual project so that we can find them easily, and in history, you can then go back in time and find projects that we could reference on, uh, other projects, or use it in that, in that way.
Okay, so the, the added item is, uh...
E, under twelve E.
Twelve E. I think I'd like to ask you to report under eleven on Canyon Lake as an update.
Okay.
It's a funded project, and it'd be an update on the dredging.
Okay.
May not, may or may not affect our budget, we can get back to that as, as you bring it up.
Right.
And you can take it up forward to August.
Okay.
That way it's not an agenda item that, uh, requires a vote.
All right.
Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, it's just an update.
It'd be an update, so if you want to present that at that time, that'd be great.
Okay, not a problem.
And, uh, I think hydro, hydrology conference, uh, is pertinent to, to six A, so...
Okay.
Shouldn't that one for twelve go under ten?
Uh, project numbering system, that's an admin.
Numbering system.
It's an admin item.
Oh, is it an admin?
It's more of an admin item.
Directorate.
That, uh, it'll be discussed by directors and the admin, so, but...
Okay.
Any other palpitations to the agenda? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept it as modified.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of previous meeting minutes?
Who seconded?
Seconded? Name seconded. Amendment two, I heard you.
Okay. Thank you.
that Nathan Jovic asked the last meeting, were supposed to come under the administration items, and I noticed, uh, I don't, I wasn't able to find them on the regular agenda that I have, so I could possibly be reading off the wrong one. Instead of being under administration, it was going to be, it is on, uh, this was for the insurance, and it was placed in the treasurer's report. Do you want, I don't know if you need to change where we have it now, or the insurance, it's under insurance renewal, treasurer's report B, and on last, uh, last month's, or the last agenda, it was, the minutes suggested that it need to be placed in the admin items, is that critical?
I'm not sure that it matters a whole lot.
Okay.
If anybody had preference, would you like to speak to that?
I may have just not read the, caught that, so I probably just thought it belongs here.
You could drop the C in Jovic, that'd be the only edit I'd suggest.
Oh, oh.
Any other comments on minutes? Okay.
Commit the motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion carries. Dan. All those in favor approve the minutes as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Treasurer's report, two thousand hydro conference discrepancy, I think there's an email from Galen that came today that might have cleared that, is that true?
Yeah.
So, for the public's interest, we'll explain that, for those who haven't seen the email or understand what that item is.
Do you have that email?
Did you want me to?
I, I can summarize the email if you like.
Okay, well, there were, there were really two things.
Two things, okay.
The email and then the, then a ledger entry issued.
Okay.
So if you want me to speak to this.
Please, yes.
Well, what, what happened last time, I forgot, somebody brought up, it was forty thirty-five here dispersed, but we only, um, and the budget only approved two thousand. What happened is in the ledger, this got put in the same category, in the general category of water projects, which included the USGS Canyon Lake payment, which was twenty-five-hundred dollars. So, every, all the numbers still add up on the bottom line, but it was in the wrong catalog, category, and I've since, um, put a line item in on the, the new spreadsheet, or on the spreadsheet to separate those two. Um, the thirty-five dollars was for an extra director or extra person.
So we get, we get two free registrations, a third is half price, thirty-five dollars, so that was the, the add to that two thousand dollar, um, cost, so...
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, is this something that we've already paid for, or are we waiting?
No, we've, we've paid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else on six A? Okay, on to six B, Dan had sent out the, uh, current insurance, um, policy renewal, and it being what, twenty, trying to go back up the screen here. Two thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, sixty-one cents, um, would be our invoiced amount for the year. Effective twenty-fourth, let's switch right here, can we see it?
It's up on the screen, too.
Yeah, number three there.
I'd like to come over and show you that. Okay, thank you. Got it.
So, little decrease from last year, but generally the same coverage. Hundred dollars liability, million dollars in fine, in case there's any thievery in our bank accounts, or about five hundred thousand total assets, so millions should cover us, I would think, at this point in time. Any comments, questions about that? Motion to renew it?
I'll make a motion.
Nothing.
Who said so?
Mack.
Any discussion on the motion, renew insurance as it is priced? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, office lease renewal, Dan, you've got that coming for us, no changes?
Yeah. The lease will automatically renew if we don't do anything, and same price, four hundred dollars a month for one year. Nothing would change, we still have use of the conference room and all the other, um, things that come with it.
Okay. Seems like a prudent way to go, fairly inexpensive.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll make a motion that we let it ride till it renews.
Another year?
For another year. Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion for renewal for a year? You don't go, Dan.
Okay.
August first till July thirty-first is the term of this, just for clarification, so, any discussion on that?
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Make a comment? When you look down and you mumble second, I don't see who it is, would you just look up, look up a little bit and say it real loud for me, so I can get it better?
We'll track him.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Well, in office for another year. Item seven, uh, this is my item update on admin rule, we, we had a special letter we sent off to the Water Management Board asking for declaratory ruling, um, the administrative rule in the, in the agenda, and, uh, trying to get an update on that, I have not seen any kind of reply from that Water Management Board, Dan, we've not seen anything in our mail, have we?
No.
Nothing's come back, sorry.
Not seen anything.
Um, Mr. Farabee's in the crowd and would like to maybe update us, if you could, on what the situation might be, as far as anything that you know that's new since their May meeting or May second meeting, I think it was? Or Mr. Jasper, whoever's, whoever's on first.
I was hoping Dan Richard'd make it, he, uh, the letter was, as I recall, back last spring, was in support of his request of, of the Water Management Board, and I was hoping he'd be here, but, uh, he was denied, and got the order back here. I see your letter, as I recall, your letter was in support of his request, and, uh, two-and-a-half-page order denying him, I'll just briefly, uh, summarize what they say. He, uh, submitted the request back in December of twenty-seventeen, uh, the petition sought for the Water Management Board to determine whether or not administrative rule seventy-four fifty-three oh one oh four, prevent any local unit of government from regulating a pre-nineteen-seventy-five septic system, and they denied, they denied his request for declaratory ruling. That's the long and the short of it, and, uh, the minutes from the Water Management Board back in May when they met, the order that they entered, which I read parts of, uh, since Mr. Richard did not appear, and this is really a good sentence, and based upon information presented, councils for the city of Rapid City, the city of Sioux Falls, and Painton County, and the board has no jurisdiction, like, see, this is, I'm reading right, word for word, and the board has no jurisdiction to deal with the authority of cities and counties to regulate in this area, and that motion passed unanimously. So I guess, at this point, as a citizen, and, uh, I'd like to request the board to, uh, step up and, and ask the Water Management Board for a rule to, regular, or declaratory ruling in accordance of one twenty-six fifteen. I can't make the motions, obviously, but, but my request would be of the board, of this board, to ask the South Dakota Water Management Board to comply with SDCL one dash twenty-six dash fifteen.
Ken.
Any questions for me?
I'd like to second a motion on what he just covered, you know, that doesn't just cover Dan, that covers about, uh...
There's not a motion, there's no second yet, there's not a motion yet, so that's...
No, there hasn't been a motion, so...
I'll make that motion.
You're making a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so let's discuss that.
We can discuss.
Can you just hang for a minute in case there are, there are questions? Ken's gonna make, you have more comment, Ken?
I was just starting to say, uh, you know, I've been staying with that, uh, septic tank, it's still like that, different things have been covered across this board, but this is the first time I've ever seen a, uh, a grandfather clause thrown completely out. Uh, you know, there's not just a couple of people that have the problem with this, there's a whole bunch of people that's raising heckle with it now.
So I've got a question to either Mr. Farabee or Mr. Jasper, as far as they're denying that they can rule on this situation, and that, you're seeing that as untrue, you're seeing that as they, they can rule.
They, the state law requires all state agencies, and I presume including this one, this is a state agency, to respond or dispose of, I think the actual words in the statute, dispose of requests for declaratory rulings. So, so far, they disposed of mine by saying that I didn't submit a factual situation, that's how they disposed of mine, and when Dan submitted his, they disposed of his by saying that he wasn't in attendance, therefore they didn't rule. So it'll be interesting to see what, I'll be back up and put it this way, they're doing everything they can to avoid following the law to make a ruling. The ruling can be no ruling, obviously, but, but that would be, really be ducking it. So since I've tried, when I found that statute about two years ago, thought, well, this is a good deal, makes sense, all state agencies are required, this is not a declaratory judgment, judgments are made by court, by the judicial branch, but rulings are made by state agencies, all state agencies, by law have to have procedures, and you say so far they've ducked, and I guess, and, before I ask once, one more time, your letter, from what I understand, that, that folks, that you signed the letter, uh, Chairman Mueller, back in March the twenty-ninth of this year, and they didn't respond at all, as far as I know.
I've not seen anything come back, that's why I was asking, Dan, you was in the seat at that point in time, so...
And, and I guess if I were on the Water Management Board, and I got a letter like this from, from West Dakota, from the, from the chair, and didn't respond to it, I probably feel like I'd suffer some consequences, if I were on the chairman of that board. Anyway, so unless there's, if there's been response made that, that all of you are unaware of, then shame on them. So I guess my request as a constituent of the taxpayer, I'd, uh, I'd certainly appreciate you, you folks stepping up and asking the Water Management Board, if their rule, their rule seventy-four fifty-three oh one oh four means what it says it, it says.
So how would this be different than what we did for the letter? What's, what's the change and difference of...
This, okay, and, and Mr. Jasper can help me out here, but what they'll say was, if, if they were to respond to your letter, they'll say that your letter wasn't in the proper form. So, uh, obviously, they find any way they can to duck the issue. They had prescribed procedures for petitioning, which I followed, except the factual situation, and I didn't put a factual situation down because the Supreme Court ruled about three months before I made the request, that you didn't have to have a factual situation, and of course I got totally ignored. But anyway, I followed all the rest of the procedures that were laid out by admin, by their administrative rule, and I think Dan did the same, I think he followed the procedure. Your letter's just a letter. So, and then, and I guess if, if you folks would agree with going forward, then I would suggest that Mr. Jasper help you write the, the document to go forward.
Any other discussion, Dan?
A couple of things, um, I need to educate myself on this thing, but, you, you got some information there that, uh, that Dan Richard got, or...
Me.
I, I guess, I guess I'd like to see that before I vote on anything. The second thing is, I think, first of all, we should, uh, have Dan get a hold of the Water Management Board and ask them if we're gonna respond to, uh, what we had submitted to them, before we do anything.
Dan, Dan was on the agenda for that, for that meeting, and they disposed of him because he didn't attend, our letter was supplementary to that, for that same agenda item, and so I'm not sure Dan has, I'm not sure Dan has...
Who did we send that to?
We sent it to the Water Management Board of Directors, every director got a copy of the letter.
Okay, so, we, I think would be proper for us to, uh, in, in writing, request a response to that, number one, and number two, I'd like to see, get this information that you just, you're reading from, so I could look at, and it, I assume it's some kind of official...
You're reading from the minutes of their meeting?
I'm reading from the minutes, which is on the internet.
Okay.
That's what everybody...
It's a May second meeting?
The May second and third, they met two days.
The V R's website, you can get their meeting minutes.
Okay, I'd like to take a look at that before I vote on it.
The minutes are there, and then the order, and I asked Dan Richards, did you ever get notified? No. So I called one of the guys that I know, and asked him if there's ever an order, the minutes had been ordered issued, and I asked him if there was an order issued, and he said yes, so he sent me a copy of it.
Okay.
Ernie?
Do we know if that was sent like certified mail and registered mail, is there, is there a person accountable to receive that letter?
I don't think we registered all of them, did we, Dan? I don't believe.
No.
It was just bringing them in. Individual board members...
Do, do we assume they received the letter? I mean, do we know they received it?
You sent it to seven of them, I don't, I can't imagine...
Did they send it to the secretary too, or...
I, I wasn't part of this, I don't know.
Oh, oh, okay, I, I guess I was asking.
We sent it to individual directors to make sure each one had their own copy in time.
And to the secretary, or?
I'm not sure if we sent one to the secretary, I don't remember that piece.
Uh, I think it was just the directors.
Okay.
Well, there already isn't a secretary unless you want to talk about Secretary Perner.
Yeah, we don't talk about.
It would have been probably to his, on his subordinates.
Yeah.
Ernie?
Is, is no response a proper response? Can they ignore us?
I don't know what the limitation is on a response time, but I'd be curious if there's some safe haven of time that they can avoid a response, but no response is not a response in my, my view, but...
They sent it in March, it's July.
They sent it in advance of their May second meeting, so they had it, plenty of time to beat the May second date.
My question is, uh, somewhere in this seventy-four fifty-three oh one oh four, does it say that you have to be there when your letter gets there to be considered? I mean, do we have to send a mess, a person when they have their meeting so that ours will be considered?
Sometimes testimony's proxy, and sometimes it's a letter, in letter form, so I wouldn't think there'd be any reason that, that letter would be out of order.
I just brought it up because, I don't know if the protocol, those are the procedures.
There, there's another administrative rule that spells out how to ask for decisions or declaratory rulings, and that's lays out the format that you need to follow to submit a petition. I don't recall that that rule or any other rule says you have to be in attendance, but you have to submit the document in accordance with their format. And that's where Mr. Jasper would come in, if, if you just, folks decide to enter the fray, so to speak, then I would recommend Mr. Jasper help you, to make sure that, that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and so on and so forth.
Oh, yes.
Any, more discussion, yes?
Uh, in this case where we've already sent them a letter, right, it's been denied, did we send two letters?
One letter.
One letter has been denied.
No, they didn't.
They didn't deliver at all. Just like if the mailman didn't deliver.
All right, so the second, what would you recommend, the second step after that, for us to get this done? Are, are you saying we should send another letter, only word it differently, or?
Well, once again, petition, request through the petition form, format of West, uh, I mean, the Water Management Board of South Dakota, request that they rule, and this time you folks are the petitioners, as opposed to...
Oh, I see, okay.
You're, you're now the, become the petitioners, to the board, request or petition, whichever word you want to use.
Okay, I, I just didn't, it, it wasn't clear, but thank you.
Okay, all right, you're welcome.
Just to entertain me, George, um, how many people have septic tanks in our district? I'm just curious, I'm assuming you probably, if you know, if you don't know, I would probably try to look it up later.
There's anywhere from two to three thousand Rapid City.
Yeah.
Two to three, and they added another, oh, how many residences are out there countryside north?
I'm not sure, I mean, they're all in septic.
Hundred and fifty, so Rapid City added another hundred and fifty, two hundred, with the one they annexed countryside south. I'm guessing they're somewhere around five to six thousand rural.
Okay.
Total, total county, eight to nine thousand.
Thank you, sir.
Could be my guess. And, and there's some in Hill Cities, out of Keystone, probably some in Wall, probably some in New Orleans, those two I don't know about, I know that Keystone and Hill City have some.
That's, that's fine, I was just curious, I'm looking at scope.
Anyway, that's about all I can, at this point, about all I know is, and like you say, they, they just plain blew Dan off, put it, put it in layman's terms, you just blew him off. Ken?
Well, it looks to me like we're gonna have to get a decision from them of what they're ruling on. They have to make a declaration of rule, uh, what they're gonna, the guidelines they're gonna go by, and it has to be, it has to be within the South Dakota Civil法 law.
Well, it follows this one twenty-six fifteen.
Right.
Which I'd have to look up to see how it reads, but, uh, that's the intent. Nathan?
Just wanted to comment, I thought Ernie's question was, uh, spot on, um, as far as, um, the, uh, board not responding, uh, to us, uh, in my experience dealing with governmental agencies, if there's something of controversy that they don't want to deal with, if it's somebody that they feel like they could ignore, like any person, like, uh, George Farabee or, or Dan Richard, they'll do that. Uh, I experienced that, uh, many times in my governmental, um, experiences for twenty-one years, was extremely frustrating. It was extremely frustrating, and it was only when I reached out to people who had as much power as they did that these people actually responded. So I think that's what George is asking of us. It was only after I got legislators involved, Senator Boone's office primarily, that people actually started responding to me in my situations dealing with government agencies. Otherwise, they totally blew me off, and they were doing things that were outright, in some cases criminal. And they did not respond, nobody did anything. So what George is asking of us is simply to get himself on an equal footing with this other entity, and request something that they should be doing anyway. That's the way I look at it.
James, and then Dan?
You know, a lot of people haven't read this law from banking accounting. The ability to backdate law is specifically illegal almost everywhere you go in the country. You know, construction code changes on a year-to-year basis, and nobody wants to go pull a permit, take a fence put in their backyard, and have them told that they have to reframe their house to two-by-six instead of two-by-four. This kind of law fits right into that. They want to update you to the most current law on the books on a year-to-year basis, whether or not anything's broken. And those types of laws can apply to your vehicles, to your cars, to your children, to your complete way of life, you know, they could come in and say, hey, guess what? We outlawed this type of TV, guess what? We're gonna do house-to-house and make sure nobody has that TV anymore, or you're gonna pay a fine. And that's literally what they're doing, they're going to people's homes and saying, well, you have this, and we're gonna make you pay this fee, and you have to do it. And it has nothing to do with government whatsoever.
Dan?
Oh, I, you know, I don't know if I ever saw that, that letter that we sent down there. I don't think I ever got a copy of that.
I know I didn't either.
It was in the admin files?
I don't think, I don't recall ever seeing that letter.
We could get copies sent out, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah.
Okay, we need that.
If you do that for us, just let us email us a copy or whatever.
Yes, and I can read this, I can read this one twenty-six fifteen.
Well, go ahead, and I'll...
One twenty-six fifteen, declaratory rulings by agencies. Each agency shall provide by rule for the filing and prompt disposition of petitions for declaratory rulings as to the applicability of any statutory provision or of any rule or order of the agency. No inmate as defined in one fifteen twenty may petition an agency for a declaratory ruling on the applicability of statutory provisions, rules, or orders of the agency. Rulings disposing of petitions have the same status as agency decisions or orders in contested cases. A copy of all such rulings shall be filed with the Director for Publication and the Administrative Rules of South Dakota. So, we're not inmates, so we can do this.
That's the law, and adding on to what Nathan was saying, I guess, I guess I'm still not old enough to not be naive. You know, you think by now I would get over being naive. About three years ago, Carroll found the Supreme Court case where, right on, right on point, the Supreme Court ruled that you do not have to have a factual situation for a declaratory rule, as opposed to a declaratory judgment from a court. Anonymous would want a court to rule hypothetically. Courts are based on evidence, factual evidence. That's the courts, and that's one twenty-six fourteen. This is one twenty-six fifteen. So when Carroll found that, I, when I, I think I found, well, this is, this is really exactly what I want now, and I'm being naive, I'm gonna go to Water Management Board, or I want a VNR, Secretary VNR. I didn't know what Water Management Board at that time, but anyway, let me go ask them if this rule means what it says. To me, it's pretty black and white, that rule of seventy-four fifty-three oh one oh four. Three nineteen seventy-five, I would exempt unless one of these three things happened. That's pretty, pretty basic. Anyway. And I think I probably conferred with Mr. Jasper, and so I went ahead and pressed on. I followed their format. And went here, well, your chair and his wife were there with us, along with Carroll and Mr. Jasper, and they weren't about to make a ruling. They found, they found that the only way that they could get out of this thing was to go in executive session and talk. They actually went in executive session, rather than talk out in the open like we are right now. That, to me, was just horrible, just absolutely horrible, and that goes to what Nathan was saying about government. They broke, they broke the open meetings law by going into the executive session to discuss the motion to dismiss.
Also denied testimony of...
Yeah.
Both of them attended, so there would have been some supplementary evidence.
So slowly, I'm becoming less naive, but I haven't gotten it yet.
Dan?
Here's the letter, this may actually be a slightly earlier draft, but it's very similar, if not...
Check that against the signature, Ken, is that?
Rolled it up just a little bit. How many, roll the page? That one's not signed, this is signed.
Right, the content, variations.
Okay, general authority is thirty-four alpha dash two dash ninety-three. Law implemented was thirty-four alpha dash two dash twenty, and thirty-four alpha dash two dash two al, or I, twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Body of the letter.
That's basically the same, same body.
We can, we can get the copy of that letter on the board. I mean, Dan, if that's something we can do, email it to the board members, and you've got that.
Yeah, this would help, this would be really helpful.
Aspirants have seen that.
Did, did we discuss this at our last meeting?
March.
In March?
The March meeting, it was, I never was put in, you know, it took the eleventh hour.
Right.
And so, I was real hesitant to even vote on that thing, because I didn't have the information. I still don't really totally understand what's going on, and I wish I...
Yeah, it should be more openly...
And so anyway, we, we, board approved sending this letter to, to support of George's request at that time. But I never did see it, it's the first time, and I can't appear to see it here, because...
We shared the, we shared the administrative rule that night, we talked about it, subject, and for the sake of time, had to get that letter out prior to our next May meeting. So that's why it was a time sensitive item. Ken?
You know, I have to go along with James on this. It's not really a ruling for the individual people. It's to make this board do like it's supposed to do. And we're sending that letter. We're the state authority going down to them, saying, hey, make a declaration of their, of what your ruling is gonna be, and that's it.
Well, we can put a little more force in the equation maybe, and see if there's a way to prompt them.
It should be a little write-up also.
Just, go ahead. The board, I double-checked before I came in today, the Water Management Board is meeting this week. They meet every quarter, I think their next meeting is like October. So if you're looking at doing anything, you folks meet every, every two months, and I, of course, I've been always opposed to, I think it should be about eight months a month, but that's neither here nor there at this point. But because of all the time lag, I'd like to see you folks vote on going forward at least, and then maybe they can get on the October schedule. The Water Management Board's schedule.
Yeah, I was gonna move to table this to the August meeting, so research can be done, we can get the final copy of the letter. Dan and I could probably look into the law, just so that we're a little bit better informed. I know George has done a great job explaining it, but I would just like to read it myself, touch it, feel it. And so if I, so I would, so move to table this to the August meeting for an actual movement of what the board is going to do, because that was the question I was gonna ask, is when they met again. And I don't think we will have the time to actually formulate something within a week.
I'd second that motion.
It's a table of motion, no discussion, no...
Table, we're done till August.
Well, it'd be a substitute motion, now if you're gonna follow Robert's rules.
There's a motion already out there.
So we guess it'd be a substitute motion.
That motion is that we...
Throw away the... Final letter.
Ken?
Who seconded it?
The declaratory rule.
Oh, okay.
It was seconded, yeah, discussion, so I would need to call a vote.
Well, there's substitute motion, if you wanna follow Robert's rules.
We should do that.
That's what you're making, right?
Yes, sir.
So we should do that.
The substitute motion is to continue, not to table. To continue the August meeting.
Then we can call the vote. We have to vote on this substitute.
Oh, right.
I think his motion is proper, proper table it to the next meeting.
As long as, August is not a regular meeting, it's a budget meeting, so you want to be sure, just look that in there, just technically. The August meeting's a budget meeting, right?
Yes.
Primarily, public hearing for the budget. So, things can be acted on at that meeting as well, so. I'm a little bit torn on the, on the substitute versus the table. I'm not certain which this is, and if anybody has some clarity to bring. Ken?
Sorry about that.
I'm Chuck Jasper, if it'll help you decide on what you want to do, as George already mentioned, he in essence was told he didn't submit a factual situation, therefore, that's why they refused to act on his petition. And Dan's petition essentially was, were very similar to George's, but I expect that they were going to blow him off in the same way and say he didn't have a factual situation. So what I, when I was discussing this with George before, I indicated what I would do is I would do a petition for you that would contain a factual situation. Factual situation essentially being, Pennington County's got this ordinance, the ordinance is contrary to your rule, consequently, that's a factual situation that needs to be resolved. And you're the people that need to resolve whether or not you mean what you say.
Yeah.
And so, if you want, I will have such a thing drafted for you by the next meeting if you decide to continue this rather than table it. I think table means you blow it off completely.
Well, table allows you to bring it back to the table.
Okay.
Off the table, I think it's...
Has to be voted off the table.
It dies.
Yeah.
Respect, that's why...
That's my suggestion.
Trying not to ignore the table requests or substitute motion, but not having the book in front of me. Nathan, you don't have your book, do you?
He is looking at it right now, like, I'm feeling I should buy one myself, so.
This is why the executive team talk like we should have a Robert's rule order clarifier for some...
Because this is motion really should have been a substitute motion.
I think, I think the primary, my, my understanding is, a motion to table has to be the primary motion to kill it before there's another motion. That's why I'm conflicted with the table versus the substitute.
This is under, so this is an older version of Robert Hill's border that we got, but I don't know if this has changed or not. This says, lay on the table, this motion takes precedence over all other subsidiary motions in order to any incidental questions that are pending when it was made. It yields to privileged motions, and to motions that are incidental to itself.
So it's a primary motion now.
I think it's gotta be the first motion, is why I'm stalled here.
It's unviable and cannot have any subsidiary motion applied to it.
So it's a primary motion, not a secondary.
But it yields to privilege mo, how, how was that wording? It yields to privileged motions?
But there was a main motion made.
So the first motion is predominant, and this is, this is a substitute. So then this is a substitute motion, is what, is what this would reflect, and maybe Nathan needs time to look that up.
Privileged motions while not relating to the pending question are of such importance that they take precedence over all other questions. Due to this high privilege, they are unreviable. When a subsidiary motion can be applied to them, accept the motions to fix the time to which to adjourn and to take a recess, which may be amended. But after the assembly has actually taken up the orders of the day, or a question of privilege, debate, and amendment are permitted, and subsidiary motions may be applied to any main motion.
So the motion's gonna have to be voted, or it had a second, had a discussion, up or down motion.
It did, but I want to acknowledge if that's a substitute motion, that's been seconded, that we vote on that.
Right.
And that's where, if you've got time to look up substitute motion, I mean, one more pause here, we can get the...
I think that's what they're calling subsidiary motions.
You just had something on the screen.
Yeah, it wants to connect to the internet though, and I can't get on the internet. Let me try it again. It's not cooperating.
See, number eleven talks about main or principal motions, and what Ken did was, it was a main motion.
Something conflicted, I thought a table had to be the preceding of the first motion made.
Right.
I don't want, I don't want to genuinely, you know, deny that.
No, if it's...
It's a substitute motion, so it's a substitute motion, we can vote on the substitute motion. And that's where we have been. So we have a discussion on the substitute motion of delaying this until August.
I'm sorry?
You have anything new to what?
This does say...
Do you have an item automatically reappear or use postponed?
Definitely. Does that help?
Postponed.
Postponed.
So here's the definition of a main motion. Main or principal motions are made to bring any particular subject before the assembly for its consideration. The main motion takes precedence over nothing.
Over nothing?
Cannot be made when any other question is before the assembly. It yields to all privileged, incidental, and subsidiary motions, any of which can be made while a main motion is pending. So, I think the subsidiary motion to lay on the table takes precedent over the main motion which was made by...
Hold on, hold on. No motion that has another motion adhering to it can be laid on the table by itself. So we cannot table it with an active motion. If an active motion...
That's my understanding.
That's an active motion.
And that is Article forty subsidiary motions, Chapter twenty-eight.
I think the idea here is just to not act on this tonight, bring it up at the next meeting, so...
And that's what the substitute motion is offering.
Yeah. And, and... We should load on that.
You've gotta clear your first motion first.
The substitute motion actually stands in the way of the first motion.
Now, you can add kind of a substitute motion, and then...
Make the substitute.
That passes in the...
But you can't make a motion if you...
I will...
Yeah, I mean, if you can't, yeah.
I think we got, is everybody clear on this? As far as I'm understanding, the substitute motion is on the floor right now? A second to delay this till August?
I get that part, but I don't understand what we do with the, with the original motion.
The motion's been substituted by this motion.
So we don't vote on it or anything?
We'll vote on the substitute motion to delay this item until August.
Okay, I got it. Sounds right to me.
Does that, is that the intent of the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry about the...
August meeting, that's okay. It's totally fine. We're able, all those in favor of the substitute motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 We have a...
Roll call. Roll call. Roll call? Yes, please. I think it was five-four, but I won't confirm that. Ken Moss?
Nay.
Puerke?
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Jovic?
Nay.
Nay.
Williams?
Nay.
Mack?
Aye.
Byalada?
Nay.
Durle?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Yeah, it's tied.
No, we didn't get Gaddy's vote.
One, two, three, four.
Two.
Ernie Gaddy, yeah.
We need one more vote.
Oh. You're not on the list for some reason. Gaddy?
Nay.
The motion fails.
Fails, okay.
So, we drop back to the first motion that was on the floor.
Come back to the original motion.
That was that the board would write a letter to have them a declaratory ruling. Not just for this specific item here, but what are they going to do the rest of their life as a board? Are they going to follow their rules, or are they going to follow the rules, period? But they should, the law.
So, so give me the motion so I can write it down.
Okay, clarification of that motion is that the Water Board would write a letter to.
South Dakota Water Management Board.
South Dakota Water Management Board requesting a declaratory.
Okay, I'm writing it down. Request anything. What?
A declaratory ruling.
Okay, good. I want to get this one right, so they can't come back on us in anything else.
Well, suggest to end of that motion that we have a legal representative draw that up, draw that letter up. So, that doesn't come back on us.
Okay. I'll put that in the motion, okay?
Yes.
No second, but Bob Williams?
Second.
And if, is he the attorney?
Yes.
Is prepared to do it in a week. It could be signed by the executive board in that time period.
That could be assigned by.
We can, we can work with Mr. Jasper, Ken, check, whatever you go by.
Question or comment? I think the motion is for a letter, and I think if you really want to push the button, you need to do a petition. Because that's what the statute language calls for, is a petition.
Okay, change that.
I said I could do it. You have a legal counsel, you can then do it too.
Petition versus letter?
I'd like to amend that, to change the word from letter to petition. Petition report.
Motion on the second, agree to the word petition instead of letter. Which is what this statute calls for. Okay. Any discussion on that?
Pastor, who, who is, who is the attorney that's going to draw this up? Is he our attorney?
No, we've got a different attorney that's ours.
We have an attorney that.
That does our business.
Is that related to the question of?
It's.
We're spending money here.
Yeah, we have an attorney on the tanger, so I assume we should.
We've not spent a dime. I talked with her about two months ago and asked her, and she's still there, but we've never hired her to do anything, so.
We're going to have to hire an attorney to do this, if we're spending taxpayers' money.
If it's necessary to hire anybody, or if it's a volunteer attorney who knows the, knows the way.
What tax, what money would it cost?
We, we take money out of our budget.
No, no, we said anything about thinking we have a.
Attorney and attorney.
Why would we have to hire a attorney?
An attorney.
I mean, what, excuse me just a minute, I just have this one question.
Is the attorney is going to draw?
One question. If we have an attorney that we have on board for us and we voted on that, and we, and she's on our board, or she's our attorney, wouldn't it be, wouldn't that be the one that we would use, or would we go out, not that I care, except for to do it the right way?
Is there cost to the board for your services, sir?
Are you an attorney?
Yes.
I think.
Both.
Are you the attorney for the West Dakota Water Development?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
We use our own attorney then. I don't know, I think he could do a good job, but I think we should.
I think the motion said an attorney, I don't know that.
I don't have, I don't have an.
That's why, that's why I'm asking the question, because we're going to, I'm assuming we're spending money.
Nathan?
Chairman, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves here, we've got a question on the floor, and we're moving ahead of ourselves.
Well, my point, Nathan, is that we say, in, in, this is the motion as it's, as it's, as I've written it down. That the West Dakota Water Development Board will, will write a petition to the South Dakota Water Management Board requesting declaration ruling, a declaration ruling, written by an attorney, and it doesn't name it which attorney. It may need some more discussion on the attorney part, or we can leave it like it is, I guess.
We can, we can decide to do the petition by an attorney, and then maybe it's a subsequent matter to.
I think we should actually.
Who the who is, what's that?
I guess what bothers me, I don't care, I think either one can do it, it's not, except for what bothers me is that we don't, this board doesn't like to follow procedure, or even sometimes understand procedure. And if we have, if we have an attorney, the correct procedure would be to use her, if she denied, and not only that, but I think we, if we have any questions, the board should be aware and be able to vote. If you want to change it, just change it to Mrs. Jasper, there'd be nothing wrong with it, just follow the procedure. Try to have some continuing, some, some procedure that we can continually do every time, and not do something different every time a question comes up. That's all I'm asking.
I'd like to respond to that.
Listen.
If we hired an attorney that was, if we had an attorney that was on retainer, and they were really good at, at real estate law, and we ended up in a situation where we needed something very different from that, then we may not want to hire that attorney that's really good at real estate law. We might want to hire an attorney that's really good at whatever the other situation is that we're looking at.
Well, each of, each of these attorneys are equally good, either one could do it.
But your example being?
That's not the example we're at here, one's not better than the other, or not, one's not specializing more than the other. Either one could do it.
It's a subject matter expert, I think is what he's looking at, as a, as the means.
Well, both of them are experts.
Well, this man has already said that he has background in this particular problem. So, he already has a lot of the research done. So, we're not going to be paying him to research all of this over again.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Jasper. It's been brought up that you would, you would do this pro bono?
Well, I said I would charge for it.
You would?
My fee is $2.15 an hour.
Okay. Which is probably the same as the other.
That's why I brought it up, because recently we have attorneys, you're talking about money involved here. So, now it's, it's getting bigger. From what I was understanding, we were talking about.
Well, I get the feeling that if this board writes a letter to that board, we're going to get the same thing, blown off into a trash can. But if it is written by an attorney, a legal document, they can't blow it off as easy.
Not disagreeing with that.
That's not what the disagreement is. The question being whether we, we follow our own procedures, or if we go off in another direction. Because either way, we pay, and I believe either attorney can do this very well. But I, I'm concerned about our, our board in general. We, we, we have people who we say should, and we have hired to do certain jobs. And we, we don't, in this case, we, she's our board attorney. We, we already voted on it, we already signed her as that. I believe we should be consistent. Just being consistency is something that we have a little problem with on this board sometimes.
Chuck, is there an estimate of cost that you could throw at us, develop this in your mind?
Two something an hour, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't expect you to spend more than two hours on it.
Okay. That's $430.
Because as Mr. Moss pointed out, I'm familiar with the situation.
Um, I, I, there's no doubt that you can do it. I, it's not about the attorney as much as it is about our board being consistent on what we once agreed on.
Got it.
It, it has nothing to do which one.
Got it, thank you.
We just need to be consistent.
Ken, is there, is there a means for an amendment for a maximum dollar amount for this amendment, or this motion? Or do you, you'd like to just vote on it as it is?
Uh, I would like to withdraw that portion of the legal thing, and just make a motion that we hire Mr. Jasper and not to exceed $550. That's for any overrun cost or anything like that to write the letter.
Petition.
So, that.
Petition.
So, the intent of your motion is petition for Mr. Jasper not to exceed $550? That's.
Can somebody read that, or state the motion?
$550. The way it reads right now is that West Dakota Water Development Board will write a petition to the South Dakota Water Management Board requesting declaratory ruling, a declaratory ruling, written by, written by Mr. Jasper, not to exceed $550. That's how I have it now.
Bob, are you seconding that?
Seconding.
You're second, Bob?
Yes.
You second before we go.
I have a question. We, we had a motion on the floor.
Right.
And now we've changed the motion.
Amended.
We amended the motion?
It's amended.
It's never seconded, though.
Yeah, they said.
Yeah, but it's.
He's seconded, he's seconded by Bob Williams, he's time it was amended, so. Point.
What was the price?
$550.
Let's exceed $550. Other discussion on that? James?
And we'll say one thing, having to do a lot with real estate, anytime an attorney opens a book, it's five hours, just open a book to, to research the matter, to at least have a.
I'm, I'm not questioning this, I'm not, I'm just questioning what, you know, we started out, we have a discussion about spending taxpayers' money here, and we were.
It's fair, it's a fair point, because there's a cost, there will be a cost involved.
So, now, now we know that, now I know that there's a cost involved with this.
Right.
And, so I'm, I'm a little more clear on what we're doing, trying to get myself clear on what we're doing.
That turns over. For about 10th of the population of Pennington County, the septic system does this.
I guess we could call the vote, couldn't we?
We can call the vote.
And then call the vote.
Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No.
We're at six-three, but we can go roll call just to make sure. Moss?
Aye.
Yurkey?
No.
Jovic?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Mack?
Nay.
Byalada?
Aye.
Durle?
I'm going to go with aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
I just have it.
And I lost track of the names.
Dan's got it recorded.
Yeah.
Motion carried?
Motion carried.
Motion carried, okay. Sound like it did, so. We're done with that.
I guess my better judgment, but I think she can do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item eight, Missouri River STSMNT Alaba Study, we've got both Dr. Kender and Nathan Jovic's item, so. Do you gentlemen care to update us?
Sure. So, a group of us, we had, it seems like a long time ago now. Month or so ago.
Yeah.
And had a discussion about the proposal from the School of Mines. We went through the proposal, we had several comments regarding the proposal. And I think came up with something that was perhaps a little more clear on what we were looking at doing. I think part of the issue is that we had professors from the geology department that were kind of spearheading the proposal, and most of the work that we were looking for in the proposal was related more to civil engineering as opposed to geologic engineering. So, I think the geological engineering professors felt a little uncomfortable with some of what was going on there, so. It's my understanding that they talked to Dr. Kender, and we kind of reloaded on what we were looking at. Initially, we were looking at sponsoring a graduate level geological engineering student, and now we're looking at a civil engineering student that would be interfacing with the geological engineering department, which to me seems much more appropriate since this is primarily a civil project that we, that we would be looking at. So, for those that aren't familiar with what we're talking about, this is a project to study the possibility of getting some or all of our water allocation or allocations from the Missouri River out here to Western South Dakota. In my opinion, projects like this are exactly why this board was set up, to address issues on a broad scale like this. So, from my perspective, this is a very worthwhile project. I would like to see something happen here. I think this could really be a big legacy for the board here, if we were able to make this happen, and bring water on a potentially large scale out to Western South Dakota, could have a major impact on this region. So, that's what this study is about. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Kender, and if you want to expand on what I just said.
I, I really don't have anything to add. I was working with Alvis and Arden from the start, kind of just, but then it kind of evolved as you spoke, and, and I was gone on some of those meetings, just in a pretty busy summer, but, yeah, that's where it's at. Very specifically about demands, about water availability, and then the options to bring that Missouri River water out here.
Looks like we'll get a report in January, a midterm report, a brief, pre-final report in June, a final report August, is what I understood.
Yeah, I would say that's.
That's kind of how it broke out in the, in the proposal. So, we'll get some updates as this is going along. And has anyone, everyone had a chance to read that proposal, content?
I have a couple of questions about the proposal, especially on the number two, the documentation of current water supplies.
Yes.
I see no reference of the US Army Corps of Engineers. And looking, because that is kind of my area of expertise, I was looking at the old Bill Janklow ESTI pipeline that wanted to move slurry to Wyoming, and how Missouri took it to the Supreme Court and lost. And with that ruling, the Corps has the regulation of the reservoirs. And I'm assuming the pipeline is going into one of the reservoirs. The reservoir is the Missouri River, unless you're like, you might like a 10-mile little stretch where the dam isn't, between like Oahu, and, because Lake Shark goes all the way to Oahu, and Oahu goes all the way up to Bismarck. And then you have Garrison that does Lake Skanduia.
So, so I'm not sure if I'll answer your question, but I'll attempt. So, the water right is on the Missouri River in the Missouri, and it would have to be delivered by a pipe. So, the source would either use an existing setup pump, that's part of the alternatives, is looking at joining with current distribution systems coming from the Missouri River, bring water across the state, or a separate one, so those are two different alternatives. But the source would be some kind of pump, pipe that is connected to the Missouri River.
So, it could be existing on the.
Yes.
On, oh, that makes sense, because that's what I was wondering if you put in the study, the pipe was actually in the river, and then we'd have to deal with the Corps, which is a whole another story, or.
And, and it depends on what reservoir, the Corps manages the Missouri, but like you go to Pactola and Deerfield.
Yeah.
Bureau manages them until they get to flood stage, and then the Corps takes over. So, those are the kind of things we would really clearly identify.
And I know with regulations, the Bureau and the Corps kind of have the Hundredth Meridian as the rough, but I know the river. And I know with regulations, the Bureau and the Corps kind of have the Hundredth Meridian as the rough, but I know the river.
Yeah.
So, that's why I just wanted to make sure that that wouldn't possibly look into in this.
Yes, yes.
I didn't see that, so, thank you.
That's a good point.
Other questions, comments? This does represent the same dollar amount, I believe, and it's a second vote if we go there tonight, is how I understand it.
So, it should be exactly the same amount.
Okay. Since it's a motion and it's a second vote, I can call for the vote, I believe.
What was that dollar amount?
Thirty-seven thousand and some change.
Thirty-seven, three forty-one.
There we go. Bottom line.
We're dead on on that.
Given the discussion, I'm going to call a vote. Second vote, first one's affirmative. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Kender, you more than...
And if I may, just, you know, we're off and running. We have all the contracts for the other project signed, sealed, and we're working. It's moving on.
You should dovetail with that one a little bit, huh?
No doubt.
Thirty-seven thousand will buy you a lot of shovels. Yeah, probably won't buy them for this project.
Thank you, thanks, Guy.
Okay. Budget proposal request, we're on a nine A, Newton Fort Creek. Do you have your key?
Yes, thank you very much.
Gentlemen in the audience, I believe?
Yes, I was contacted by Rob Timm. He's present here this evening to give us more update on what he's requesting. I, I asked, I told him I'd put it on the agenda. Uh, he's looking at, they have a problem with their culvert that supplies their access to their home up, uh, up above, uh, Hill City towards Deerfield. And, uh, anyway, I, I said I would, I'd give him the opportunity to present his, uh, project to the board and see what we want to do with it, so...
Can you do it in five to seven minutes?
I'll do it in, uh, four and a half.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, I have more paper for everybody, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Um, everybody likes paper. Um, my name is Rob Timm and I'm the president of the Old Deerfield Road District. We all love road districts, don't we? Paines County loves them because they don't have to deal with it. Thank you. Um, Old Deerfield Road District was formed back in two thousand and fourteen, um, and, uh, am I three minutes up already?
We're good.
Um, it was abandoned. Our, our road used to be Deerfield Road about fifty, sixty years ago. Um, our road crosses, uh, Newton Fort Creek and it's the only, uh, road in and out for, uh, all of us homeowners. Um, we're adjacent to the Mickelson Trail. Um, like I said, we, we formed in two thousand and fourteen, began collecting, uh, tax dollars in two thousand and fifteen. We, we, um, collect about sixteen hundred dollars per year. Um, and you see the location and all that good stuff. And, uh, over the years, forty-plus years, uh, homeowners have basically been responsible for the maintenance of our road. But as you can see, in two thousand and fifteen, uh, a flash flood pretty much devastated our culvert. And as you see some of the, um, the fun pictures that we have there, and here's the most recent picture I took yesterday. Um, we all like, like pictures, don't we? Um, we're very concerned about what this, what this culvert's going to do over the next, next, uh, months and years. And so, we took it upon ourselves here recently to, um, contact three different, um, engineering firms, um, locally to get some kind of estimate of what they think we should do. None of them responded to our, our letters because, and when I followed up with them, they basically said, "This is too small of a project. We don't, we don't want to deal with this." And so, as a result, what you see there in the pictures is, is a damaged culvert. And, um, what we've done since, uh, since some of these pictures have been taken back in two thousand and sixteen, we actually, uh, did some, um, grading and up and, and did some, did some, um, graveling in a portion of the road across the culvert and resurfaced the overall road in two thousand and sixteen. And what we're asking for is, um, think about us when it's budgeting time. Because we're estimating this, this cost is going to, I, I can't imagine it costing us more than ten thousand dollars to do this. But, you know, you never know. But our challenge is going to be getting it done. And, and we do have a contractor that's interested in doing it, but he's not going to give us an estimate till probably, um, later this fall just to, just so that our flows can go down. So, any questions? I'm nearing my three and a half minutes, so...
I'm going to take off and lead on this one just because I'm president of the road district with five, four landowners, four...
Oh, good.
Four properties and several culverts. And, uh, um, I wouldn't expect to go out to the general public. We have the road district funding that we accumulate in the year, from all the years. But I wouldn't expect to go to the general public and ask for tax dollars to fix our road or culvert. So, that's my own personal bent on it, so...
I, I respect your opinion. However, we do, we do pay taxes into the, into the water development district.
True. Other comments?
Well, I would, uh, I guess one of the questions that I, uh, asked, which I think is a fair question, is just exactly laying off of what Mike just said. I mean, why, why would you think that, um, other, um, homeowners in the area here should subsidize the work in your community?
I, and I, I would answer that too. We've been, uh, putting money into the water development district for how many years? And if we, if we took a look, take a look at that funding, then I, I don't know how much that would come up to you.
I'm not so concerned about where your money's coming from, but how does this relate to clean water versus a culvert for a road that's being...
Let's just say if we had another, um, flash flood, that blows out and then your, whatever degree and whatever, it goes down, downstream. That's as simple as I can probably think of it.
Ken?
I'm also the president of the road district with six...
Well, we're all having fun, aren't we?
First question that comes to mind, the new road that they're putting in up there between Deerfield and, uh, Rochford, how is this going to impact that area?
Not at all.
Okay, you're not even near there?
No, well, that's probably about ten miles away.
Okay. Uh, I think there's a misconception here about, uh, your tax money, uh, going into a road district. You still pay your tax money into a road district. I pay, I, I, just a certain amount is taken out of county that I normally pay for my land. It goes into road district, uh, for, uh, maintenance, repairs and so on like that. So, I, I can't see that you're trying to gouge the taxpayer on that, but you're going to have to figure out a way that you can get access in. Have you asked the Corps of Engineers in county what they could do to help you out?
We've asked the county and county basically has put us off to other, other folks.
And did you go to the Corps of Engineers?
Not yet, no.
Talk to those people? Because if they're doing other culvert work in that area...
That's a good idea.
A lot of times they'll throw a little gravel in. I, we've done it before, you know, because it's a taxpayer type thing. But I would suggest you ask Corps of Engineers what their plans are when they're putting that road in, what they could do.
But this is one, this is one of the reasons I came tonight is to get, to get these ideas and to get some, get some suggestions, you know, for what, what direction we should go. Because bottom line, this is a small, small project when, in the grand scheme of things. And so, you're exactly right.
No project is small when your house is on the line.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, you might want to change your idea from a metal culvert to a concrete culvert. You'll find that it'll last a lot longer and a little cheaper too.
Dan?
I, also, um, have you checked with FEMA if you, if, if there's a flood issue at all? I know, I know it's tough to get, get money for this kind of project and, you know, I, I, as I told you, I said, "I'm not sure if this is, this is really what our mission..."
No, we haven't checked with FEMA yet either, so...
Okay, you know, our mission is really dealing with, you know, ski...
Well, and, and as you guys, as you all know, as, as, as road district presidents and stuff, you get paid a lot of money to, you know, to, to, to administer all that. And, you know, it's a full-time job, right? You know, so, you know, but I, I appreciate that. You know, that's the, that's the biggest issue we have. There's only four of us and, you know, and it's really, you have to be on top of this stuff to, to really make something happen.
But most of our projects are associated with, you know, like drinking water.
Sure.
Or, uh, we've been talking to us about some wastewater projects, stuff like that.
You bet.
So, that's kind of our...
There is an opt, opt-out option where you can up the, up the ante from our hundred percent levy to more and you can structure that for five years, ten years or whatever.
We, we talked about that and my, one of my other, um, my neighbors has a gun, so, I mean, that, he looked at me kind of funny.
Hey, if that gun can be used as a culvert to go across that road...
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you.
James?
I have two things. Um, you do not have an estimate at all yet?
No, not yet. That's just a rough estimate based upon some other projects around the neighborhood.
And that looks like an extremely, not just simple, run.
Exactly.
So, whatever permit you're going to get's going to have to go straight through DNR just to even work on that.
Yep.
I, I would think that it would be more of a county, it's more of a highway, road type of project than a...
We've talked to the highway, highway department and they gave us a runaround.
Yeah, yeah. To me, to me, that project, your project would fit more with that, with the road.
Because the, the issue at hand was with regard to the, the actual road itself and you, road district people have dealt with this. Once it, once you, you've taken over that road district, the county wants nothing to do with it.
The county wants no more roads as they can.
It, it no longer exists.
More torrential for thirty-plus years.
Is there, is that a named creek?
That's Newton Fort Creek, yeah.
It's the one that goes west out of Hill, Hill City.
It sounds like that's an Army Corps problem right there.
Yep.
So, that's exactly whose problem that is. That's an Army Corps engineer problem. It's a named creek.
We're pretty close.
As you said, the reservoirs are only controlled by Army Corps engineers and, you know, they have even people... I know, uh, what, ten, fifteen years ago, guys like me from Elsworth went down to Hill City and Keystone and did a whole bunch of bridges for just such a reason.
Yep. Well, it's good ideas. I, I appreciate it. I do appreciate it.
Yeah, it might be right up Army Corps' problem list for a bunch of weekend...
The challenge, the big challenge we have is time, time, timing. I mean, I'm, we're, we're getting worried.
Yeah.
Well, certainly needs to size it.
It's a named creek.
If you're getting flooded out and it's running over the road, there's not, you don't have a big enough...
Well, for example, this spring, and I should have took a picture then, is when there's an ice jam on it. Then, then it went over the road at that time.
It's a named creek and, yeah, it's Army Corps.
Yeah, that's a lot of...
You might want to consider getting your name on the, uh, list at the National Guard Engineers for community service planning and they could put that sucker in. When's the next active...
Every, every June they go.
Yeah, every year.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, they go away before they go to the... The golden tires is more combat training versus...
But they've got their engineers that go out there and train.
Yeah, they've got their engineers every, every, every month though.
On the Mickelson Trail, they, they've been rebuilding those bridges on the, on the Mickelson Trail and one or two of those a year for...
That's, that's what I was...
Well, that's, funny you mention that is that when we did have that flash flood, we did use the, the bridge there that we drove on the Mickelson Trail in order to get to it.
For emergency access.
And on, on that bridge.
Yeah.
And yes, an F-150 Super Crew does fit over the bridge.
Probably have a duty.
Uh, no.
It sounds like from listening to the directors here, that it's probably not a project that we would, we'd be interested in funding, but, you know, you've got some ideas.
But you have your names, you guys can see it at Elsworth and Army Corps. This is right up the community service.
You did a nice job of presenting it.
Well, it's good information to have and we wish you the best of luck. Getting homes is a good, good idea. Sorry if it fell kind of off our radar.
All right, well...
If you've got some ideas you can develop and, and we wish you luck. I don't hear a motion of any kind of passage.
That's, that's fine. I wasn't expecting that.
I think something else, I'll, I'll get ahold of you.
Absolutely. Well, you know, this is, this is going to be one of those things that's going to have to happen pretty, pretty soon. So, we'll be, we'll get in touch with the Corps.
If your contract became, you bid to the fall, that's not...
No.
You want to reset all these for...
Look, you can have those.
Great, thanks for coming by.
They'll keep, keep...
Good luck, Rob.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
You bet.
I think at this point in time, we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene on, uh, nine B when we get back.